I'd like to convene the meeting of the PBD City Council dated Thursday evening, October 24, 2019, in the Frank L. Wiggin Auditorium. Please join me in a moment of silence. All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. This meeting is being televised live on cable channel nine and is being taped by PBD Access Television and also being recorded by our city council stenographer. We'll move to item four A on the agenda. The clerk will read the notice. I'm sorry, that's a recessed public hearing.
Motion to receive, delay communication.
Mr. Chairman.
On the motion to receive, all in favor and opposed, Council Mitsoulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a letter from Attorney Calde asking to recess. There's still the 24th the next month, and I agreed to that. The reason, I'm waiting for the opinion of the Health Department on this before I make a decision. I don't know what their delay is, but, Tim, I wish you would send a communication to the Health Department, or the building inspector, asking them to give me a report back so that I can make a decision on the special permit. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, Council Mitsoulis, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Council, that would be November 14th.
November 14th.
Fourteenth for the continuation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Move to item four B on the agenda. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council, the City PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, October 24, 2019, at 7:30 PM, in the Frank L. Wiggin Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Sousa Signs LLC, 225 East Industrial Park Drive, Manchester, New Hampshire, for a special permit seeking to install an electronic message board sign which will be affixed to a freestanding sign at 515 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with section 6.1, 11.4.8, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councillor John G. Turco, City Council President.
Thank you. Can the petitioner please approach the podium and identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do? You just need to press this button one time, and you'll be able to speak right up to that podium there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Jason Gagnon, here representing for Sousa Signs LLC. We are seeking a special permit for the EMC over at 515 Lowell Street. The special permit is being sought for a 24-square-foot, three-foot-by-eight-foot, eight-millimeter, double-sided electronic message center, which is required by this sign's ordinance. The proposed scope of work is to remove the existing single-face granite sign running parallel to Lowell Street and install one new internally illuminated 76.5-square-foot sign, overall size. Double-faced freestanding sign with electronic message center on the Lowell Street frontage, maintaining and keeping the five-foot setback required by city ordinances. The total square foot for the entire project is 76.5. The message center will be used to advertise the business on the property as well as the tenants that are on premise, also allowing emergency messages in cases of disasters, emergencies, town-related events, and any school stuff.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here in the audience to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody in the audience here to speak in favor? Come right up to the podium, sir. Please press the button one time and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is Jonathan Tapper, 515 Lowell Street. We are one of the owners of the building up there. And really, for us, it's about visibility, it's about enhancing safety right now because we have, for those who are familiar with our property, one way in, one way out. People are blowing by the building right now, and it's created a lot of chaos at the exit. So we feel this is going to be tastefully done for us, for our neighbors, and we'll enhance everything here in PBD. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else here to speak, in the audience, to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition to the petition? Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Council Charrest.
Thank you, Chairman. I spoke to the petitioner numerous times throughout the last couple of weeks. They are within their requirements of the sign. It is the special permit for the digital electronic messaging center. It is smaller than previously looked at or thought of, so I'm pleased with that. We're speaking with them, understanding that this is used for only that business, that business location. The owners of the property have been in the city for many generations. I think most of us know the property. It is certainly well-kept and well-recognized as a nice property. I think they will continue that use in that way, and this is just going to enhance, as they say, the visibility for their tenants. Again, this is only for their use, their tenants' use, even though they own businesses and property outside of that area. They would not be advertising, using that board for anything other than that. They did tell us to speak about the city being able to use the messaging board if there's an emergency that we need to broadcast out, which would be helpful. They are understanding to stay within the limits of the brightness and how many times it can change over. They are in agreement that if the -- so far, I haven't heard any issues. I've reached out to some of the neighbors, even though there's no residential neighbors or butting it, the other people didn't seem to have a problem with it. So with that, within the ordinances we have and that not looking to do anything outside of that, I can be in favor of this petition.
Any councilors? Council Saslar.
Thank you. So I'm in favor of the sign. I just had one question of the petitioner. You had mentioned the issue with traffic coming in and coming out. I just, how does the sign, how are you planning on addressing that through the sign? I'm just not quite sure I see that. I thought it was more for advertising your business and your other tenants in the building. I was just curious. You talked about the traffic situation. I'm very familiar, I live around the corner. I do see, quite frankly, vehicles go in through the "do not enter" sign, and it's an issue, but I'm just trying to understand how you're going to address that through the sign.
Yeah, so, besides the obvious benefit of advertising, which, you know, kind of goes without saying, a lot of times when people are coming down the street, as long as it's not, you know, during rush hour, you know, you're going 30, 35 miles an hour, and they don't see where they're going until they're actually by it. There's no current landmark or signage right now to alert people that they're coming to the plaza until they've already gone by the entrance, so they immediately bang a hard right to try to get in the exit, and that's where some of the problems are popping up. So we're kind of looking at this as twofold. One, to obviously help grow our business and the business of our tenants, but also for safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And I understand, because it's funny, and I totally understand what you're saying, when I saw the person go in, they were coming from West PBD, so they were in there, and I just saw it like the other day, it was a delivery truck, and I was like, you know, geez, I wish there was a police officer, because it was a delivery truck, and it was quite clear that they weren't going in. But I'm in favor of it. I think, I know this has been in your family a long time, I want to thank you. You do a great job of keeping the property looking well, you've invested in the landscaping, and, you know, it's a nice piece of property, you have some good, successful tenants in there, and so I appreciate what you folks do. And also, I do appreciate the fact that in your application, you mentioned allowing emergency messages in the case of anything related to the town, and all I would ask of you is, once the sign is up and running, I believe the Chief of Staff, Chris Ryder, takes care of the billboards in the city when there's a emergency. If you can, once it's up and running, if you could reach out to the mayor's office or Mr. Ryder and let him know if he needs the use of that, who we should contact so that the message could get out there, God forbid we should need it. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Council Rozignol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the petitioner. So the bottom portion of that sign will be for all of the businesses that are in the plaza currently? Is that correct?
Correct, as well as us promoting specials, things of that nature.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure, because I think that the sign is needed, and I have actually seen the same thing, that Counsel Saslar mentioned people going in the exit, and I know that that is a safety issue, so I am definitely in favor of it. I just wanted to make sure that there's only going to be one sign and that it's encompassing all of the businesses and not, you know, four years later, another business in that plaza wants to put up another sign, so I'm glad you're addressing all of the businesses, so thank you.
We won't be back up here asking for another sign. I promise you.
Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the petitioner. Am I reading it correctly that this thing's 20 or 21 feet tall? Is that?
I believe, I'll check my measurements here. Let's see here. I might need my sign guy up here.
Good afternoon. I apologize, I didn't hear the question from the seats.
Council McGinn, he didn't hear the question, if you could repeat it.
The question is the overall height. It appears to me it's 20 or 21 feet, is that correct?
Correct, so to the very top of the monument, if you're looking at page three of the package, the very top of the blue peak is going to be 20 foot, six inch to the grade.
So I'm just curious, why so tall? Because the, you know, I know you've got a sign now that's pretty low-profile, and I know that's not getting the desired effect, but it seems like you're going to the other end of the spectrum with something that's not really something that, you're trying to get drivers to see it, right?
Correct. And if, do you have the site plan that was sent with it? It was on a legal size 11 and a half by 17. So where the sign will be located is going to be actually taking up one parking spot, space, so if there's a few SUVs on each side of it, the height of the sign has to be at least about eight feet to the bottom of it before, or else it would be blocked by vehicles that are parked in the parking lot.
I see, so you're getting above a tall vehicle.
Correct, yeah, we're getting it to where you can see it from a nice sightline.
And you have to do that because you're reorienting it rather than across the front, you're doing it perpendicular to the?
Correct, yeah.
So that's what drives it into the property, into the parking lot, basically?
Yes.
So how tall is the building that it's going? I'm just trying to understand what it's going to look like, you know, against the backdrop of that building.
Yeah, I believe, so I believe the building's between about 28 to 35 feet to the peak of the roof.
The walls of decor portion of the building, right? Because it steps down, right?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other councilors? Seeing none, Council Charrest.
Thank you, Council. I'd like to close the special meeting, special hearings.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Council Charrest.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to make a motion to grant the special permit for Sousa Signs LLC, 225 East Industrial Park Drive, Manchester, New Hampshire, for a special permit seeking to install an electronic messaging board sign, which will be affixed to a freestanding sign at 515 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with section 6.1, 11.4.8, and 15.7, so moved by the PBD zoning ordinance.
Council McGinn, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the motion, through to Council Charrest. So I heard a couple of times from yourself and from the petitioner that they are going to limit the advertising on there to the businesses in the plaza. Is that, are you just leaving that as an understanding versus a condition?
I will make it as a condition.
I think it's important to include that as a, yeah. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. As a condition is that the sign will only be used by the property owner of his business and the tenants in that particular site, so moved.
Any other questions on the motion? Roll call, vote.
Councilors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslar.
Yes.
Charrest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Have a good evening. We're going to move to item five on the agenda, reports of committee, industrial community development, Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, excuse me. Tonight we met for the second time, excuse me, met for numerous times to try to wrap up a plastic bag ban, and we got new information from community development director Bransfield, Bransfield, Belhavance, and health director Sharon Cameron. We modified definition F under reusable bags, and we had a very informative discussion about it. The motion passed to advertise, 5 to nothing, so moved, Mr. President.
And on the motion, roll call, vote.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Council Manning Martin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I raised this concern at the original subcommittee meeting, your first one, Council Gould, and given, so I'll just repeat it tonight, that given that the state has a pending legislation for a single-use plastic bag ban that is currently being reviewed and should be kind of buttoned up soon, I think, my objection is the timing of us instituting a local ordinance, given that the state's coming down with a ban. I just think it's ill-timed for us to implement one now, which would institute changes for the consumer and businesses, only to have potential preemptive conflicts when the state comes down with their ban. So, and then when that would be implemented, we'd probably have to repeal ours or tweak ours, so I just think that it's ill-timed to institute it now, and I would defer to the state rolling theirs out so that it could be done with less confusion. So that is my objection to the motion. Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? Roll call, vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I forgot to say that we're looking for a July 1, 2020 implementation date. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On that motion, roll call, vote.
Councilors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
No.
Saslar.
No.
Charrest.
Yes.
Gould.
No.
Gravel.
No.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 3.
Councilor Gould.
We also had a communication from Mr. George Smith regarding hillside protection, which is in front of the state legislature. Mr. Smith informed us of some very enlightening situations that occur when we try to overdevelop in rocky areas. The motion to send this to the, our concern, send it to the state, our state legislature, was made by Counselor Charrest, and it passed 5 to nothing. So moved, Mr. President.
On the motion, any questions? Roll call, vote.
Councilors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslar.
Yes.
Charrest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
No further motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gravel for the finance committee.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, there was a meeting of the finance committee. On behalf of the committee, there was myself as the chair, Counsel Gould, Counsel Manning Martin, Counsel McGinn, Counsel Rozignol, and all other councilors were present at the meeting. There were two items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda was status appropriations for a period ending July 31, 2019, for the FY 2020 city and school budget. The chair made a motion to defer any discussion of that due to the age and limitation of what that report could provide, to schedule a finance committee meeting for the first regular meeting of November, and to have at that meeting the items of a status of appropriation through September 30, and a recap or a final status of the funds reallocated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. So that was the motion.
Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
I'd also like it under suspension of the rules to receive item 8G and refer it to that future meeting.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Then our next topic of discussion was brought up to us by the city clerk's office, who believes that there's a urgent need to increase fees in the city. So he requested that, he requested that we consider increasing the fee for the poll book, which is currently at $20. And there was a motion made that we follow the recommendation of the city clerk by changing the language of section 2-197 to read as, except as otherwise provided, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 51, there shall be a charge of $30 for each printed copy of the list of persons, commonly known as the annual listing, and a fee of $20 for each electronic copy, as prepared by the Board of Registers in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 51 aforementioned. So moved.
On the motion, roll call, vote.
Councilors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslar.
Yes.
Charrest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes, and we would ask that to be advertised, obviously.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
There was also a concern about dog licenses, that was brought up by the city clerk. What he's requesting is that the fees as outlined in section 616, annual license fees of Article II dogs be amended as followed, by deleting entirely the license fee schedule as presented in his communication, and inserting in place thereof the following license fees scheduled, annual license fees, a male dog, $25, a female dog, $25, a neutered male dog, $15, a spayed female dog, $15. Can a license for dogs of less $25, up to 10 dogs, $50, more than 10 dogs, $100. In addition, the city clerk shall collect the current prevailing postage charges as imposed by the United States Postal Service for dog license tag mailing. Motion was made to accept that recommendation, so we would like to accept that resume, we would like to vote on that this evening, and advertise it. So moved.
Council Charrest, on the motion.
Yeah, I just had one question I failed, I'm sorry, I failed to ask earlier. What is the fine for not having the dog license?
I think it might be $5, Counselor, I think.
All right, so.
I'm not sure what the fine is.
The fine is only $5, but the license?
There's a late fee of $5. I'm not sure what the fine is.
Okay. Can we make sure that the fine is at least, if not greater?
Greater than the license fee, yes. I'll check on that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't ask that earlier, but thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? Roll call, vote.
Councilors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslar.
Yes.
Charrest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you, Council President and committee members, for assuaging the needs of the city clerk.
Thank you, councilors, and esteemed members of the finance committee.
Thank you all. We will move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Council Mitsoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a request to send Public Works over to Wallace Street and check the signs on that street. There are a lot of them that are just missing. There are signs that should read "No parking this side." The signs are missing, they're not there, the posts are there, and if they would send someone to Wallace Street and correct this issue, I got a call from a constituent about it, and I'm sure it could be resolved pretty easily with Public Works going and looking at it. So moved. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
That's it, thank you.
Counsel, I think item 8H was done on behalf, it was a co-motion between you and Counsel Manning, if you'd like to receive that.
Motion to receive, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Counsel Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. One thing that had come up around Memorial Day was, and I know the cemetery department's kind of short-staffed, was a lot of the plaques, the veteran plaques, are grown over because it's just over time, and it actually came up at a veteran event that we were at, I was at about a month ago, and I'd like to make a motion to set something up when we get somebody from the cemetery department and veteran service officer, and look at kind of coordinating, maybe getting some of the volunteers that we're getting for some of the other stuff to help us clear off some of those grave sites, especially with Veterans Day coming around. I think we'll have a little bit more focus on it, and it was something I got asked about again, so I'd like to make that motion.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Secondly, I just want to say thank you to DPS and the forestry department. We had a pretty significant storm recently, and they were, I saw a couple of trees in my neighborhood went down, I know throughout the city, and they were pretty quick to handle the most safe, trees that had a safety issue or were blocking traffic, are blocking roadways. I know they had to go, there's some cleanup that's still happening based off that, but I want to thank them. It's not an easy job, especially with the size of some of these trees that went down. They were alive, it's harder to cut those up, and how quickly they took care of that in not the greatest of conditions, I just wanted to give them a kudo, so, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8A, so moved.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Secondly, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8D, and consistent with motion P 666-19, which recommended the sale of the city-owned parcel known as Zero Bird Street, move to formally declare the city-owned parcel known as Zero Bird Street Map 4, parcel 51A, as surplus, and further to refer this matter back to the city clerk and community development to complete the process in accordance with motion P 666-19, and the flowchart policy to dispose of requests to sell city-owned land dated April 17, 1998. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Motion, please.
Council McGinn.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turkow.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
No further motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gravel for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee. On behalf of the committee, there was myself as the chair, Counsel Gould, Counsel Manning Martin, Counsel McGinn, Counsel Rosignol, and all other councilors were present at the meeting. There were two items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda was status appropriations for a period ending July 31, 2019, for the FY 2020 city and school budget. The chair made a motion to, to defer any discussion of that due to the age and limitation of what that report could provide, to schedule a Finance Committee meeting for the first regular meeting of November, and to have at that meeting the items of a status of appropriation through September 30th, through September 30th, and a recap or a final status of the funds reallocated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. So, that was the motion.
Any questions on that motion? Seeing done, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
And if I could, Mr. President, through you to Tim. Tim, can we set up a meeting of the Industrial Community Development to review city-owned properties, please? 14th to the 21st, whatever works for you. So moved. Thank you.
Counsel, I know we received this in subcommittee, but can you receive item 8E in the regular session?
So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Council President.
Under suspension of rules, I'd like to move to receive items 7A and B and send them to the Finance Committee.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
I'd also like to make a request, not a motion, but to have the Department of Public Services or Park and Recreation, whoever has the facilities to do it, to please clean up the city-owned property, particularly the property at, on Washington Street. Having recently walked a race this weekend, I noticed once again that the bushes are well, well over the sidewalk, and they're interfering with the pedestrians, and it would just, it just looks horrible. So, all it would take is a little bit of trimming. I think if we do it, we'll probably have a better impression on those buildings. So, I won't make it as a motion, I just request it one more time. And then, as a, I'd also request that they look at the culvert on Foster Street at the start of, or at the designated area for the Riverwalk. It is loaded with tree debris, and I don't know if it came after the storm, but it's, it's literally chock-full. So, before we have a problem with flooding, would like to have them take a look at that and see if they can remove some of that debris. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
And I too would like to congratulate all candidates for running a great election season and wish you all the best of luck, and encourage people to get out to vote. There's nothing more discouraging. I couldn't agree more with Counsel Sasla. There's nothing more discouraging than the amount of effort that a candidate puts in resulting in a low turnout. It's a very simple thing. You go, you get a ballot, you fill it out, and you drop it off. It takes a few minutes. Please help them out.
Thank you, Counsel. There were two late communications that were received in subcommittee for ICD. Can you receive those in open session, just the two late communications?
On the motion, receive those. What are the late communications? Which ones? I don't have.
Two letters from residents.
It was to do with the plastic bag bans, one from Mr. Murphy, the other, from Mary Murphy, and the other one. So moved. From Mr. Harrington.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. I just have one motion, and that's for Public Services and also PMLP, to request the installation of a streetlight between 1:00 and 3:00, Antonio Drive. When that subdivision was built, there were no streetlights put at the beginning of the street. On that motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.